Not much on it.
Yeah. Hey, at least it's not one of those that's two pages long.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Farmington Hills City Council for August 28th, 2023. We will begin, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is roll call.
Mayor Barnett?
Here.
Council members Boloware?
Here.
Bridges?
Here.
Bruce, I will mark as absent. Noel?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
Newland?
Here.
Thank you.
Next is the approval of the regular session meeting agenda. Do we need to make any changes to that regarding? Okay. Dr. Massey?
Madam Mayor, I would move for approval of the agenda as published.
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Boloware. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It was Boloware, wasn't it?
No.
Oh, no.
No.
Okay.
Totally agree.
Next is the Emergency Preparedness Commission Tip of the Month. I'm seeing double. Yes, please.
Good evening, all. I'm Roger Avi, Chairman of the Emergency Preparedness Commission, and I'm going to give you some tips that you should do as citizens out there and to the council. The goal for August is training in community response. During a disaster, emergency services, community response agencies, and local government will be doing all they can to help, just like our most recent. But it takes a lot of resources to recover. By getting involved and trained in how to respond, you can assist in that recovery. A community that works together creates a stronger and more resilient community. So get involved. Participate with local groups that you are currently involved with, maybe religious organizations, for a place in case you don't have heat or cooling in your home. After-school activities. They'll also have many things about regarding training. Go to schools. Any of the schools in this area always usually have resources, especially in case of heating and cooling. They may open the schools for the same reason. If it's in the winter, for heat; in the summer, for cooling. Your homeowners association, of which I happen to be a member of, we also do training right locally in our school, in our facility, at the homeowners association, Neighborhood Watch Program. We participate in our subdivision with the Neighborhood Watch Program. And of course, any sports team always knows the latest and greatest thing to do to keep yourself flexible to be able to take care of an emergency. Participate with the local emergency preparedness groups, of which I happen to be the chairman of it, and you can go to the Emergency Preparedness Commission, Mike?
Commission.
Commission on Facebook, and we post all the latest and greatest self-help tips that you can imagine, as well as things like something we have on there right now regarding suicide prevention, where some of the people here in this room are very much deeply involved with that. As I said, I'm part of the Farmington Hills Emergency Preparedness Commission. There's also the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, as you may know it by, C-E-R-T, shelters and rescue missions in the area, which we also have, as you know, right over here, CARES in the area, and that's for food and all sorts of other things in case of an emergency. The Red Cross, the Salvation Army, employers' response teams, if they're available from some places. Just recently, during this most recent emergency, DTE were given out these bags, which had four bottles, six bottles of water in it, a flashlight, a charger for your phone, and a punch list of all the things you should do in an emergency, and a very nice little backpack. So DTE is a response agency. They were out at both Krogers, one right behind your house, Mayor, and my house, and was also over on Halsted and 12 Mile. They had a big tent set up with the thing, and they were also giving out bags of ice. So keep aware of what's going on on the radio and television, where these places are. If not, go to our website. We had that advertised on our website for this most recent problem with the power outage. Get trained. Get trained in how to respond to an emergency situation. Simple skills can save a life. If someone is able to assist, participate with the local groups that you can be involved with. For example, first aid rooms, CPR, cardiopulmonary resuscitation, AED, which is an automatic external defibrillator, stop the bleed, Neighborhood Watch Programs, insert. All of the above things I've just mentioned are actually put out by our group, the Emergency Preparedness Group. You can go to, I think it's Firehouse 4, Mike?
Firehouse 4.
Firehouse 4. I think it's $25, very reasonably priced, run by two highly trained individuals, Mr. Sagerist and Mr. Wecker. Do those classes. You'll learn all those things and have a chance to operate each of those devices. So, to get more information on these things, go to our website, and training will be pointed out where and when, and go to your local public safety meetings if you can. Anyone is welcome to come to the EPC meetings. They're once a month, first Monday, right here in the building, and we run them at 5:00 for about an hour, and we bring about all the things that we can do to help you. Some of the training can be offered to come to your group or organization. We will come out to you. If you've got a big enough group at a homeowners association, we'll come out to you. So that's my tip of the month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence? I received one from a gentleman who has a deer problem. Apparently, I think his backyard has a very aggressive buck in it, so I have passed that on to the city manager. I don't know what we can do, but I'm sure that in Joe Valentine's moving on, we will find a suitable replacement so that we can get our deer task force up and running again. Next item is the consent agenda. Since the mayor pro tem is not here, I've asked Dr. Massey if he would read the consent agenda for us.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Item number six, recommended approval of award or bid for miscellaneous tables and galleys for special services to quality restaurant and equipment masters in the amount of $15,374.10. Item seven, recommended approval of requests for employment under Section 10.01A of the city charter for three paid-on-call firefighters/recruits. Item number eight, recommended approval of City Council Special Study Session Meeting Minutes of 8 August 2023. And item number nine, recommended approval of City Council Regular Session Meeting Minutes of 14 August 2023.
Motion, Mayor.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Mas, it's been read by Dr. Massey.
A motion, Mayor.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I move that council approve Consent Agenda Item 6, 7, and, 6, 7, and 8, I'm sorry.
6, 7, and 8.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Bridges, seconded by Ms. Boloware. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, it's a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Newland?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. I'll make a motion to approve item nine under the consent agenda as read by Dr. Massey.
Support.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Noel, supported by Councilmember Boloware and Newland, that we approve item number nine.
Councilmembers Boloware?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Epstein.
Newland?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that brings us to public questions and comments. Please limit your comments to five minutes. I will put my finger up and look like I'm just swirling it around for no reason when you have 30 seconds left. Well, I just want to give you a heads up, and I don't know what to do with, you know, this, so.
Good evening to the mayor, to the council members, the city manager, city attorney-to-clerk, our esteemed fire chief, and all of the other staff members and guests and petitioners that are in this auditorium. I think most of you know that I am heavily involved in anything that's community, and we have an event coming up on our turf this time in the city of Farmington Hills. I think all of you have a flyer. This is a collaboration between the Southfield Police Chief, Alvin Baron, and the Farmington Hill Police Chief, Jeff King. This is their brainchild. They're doing a series of town hall study sessions, which are different than town hall meetings. Traditionally, town hall meetings are meetings that you go to, and the public does not get a lot of input. Well, we thought the town hall study session was better, giving the public an opportunity to do more speaking, to the appropriate personnel to listen more, and to come up with ideas on some things that are just plaguing our society and our global society, gun violence, suicide, and some of those other things that we'll be talking about. So this particular forum is going to be on suicide prevention. So I'm hoping that all of the city people, the elected officials, and a lot of you did come to the first one, that you come out and support this event. The question that we're asking for this particular series is, what can we do next? How can law enforcement and the community come together to prevent suicide? Very important question. I think most of us are one incident away from being on the edge of our seats, and sometimes when you just don't have the educational tools, you're not sure of a lot of things in your life, people make that decision to just take their life, not understanding when they take their lives. They're also taking the lives of their family members because they live with the grief and the question, why didn't they come to me? And maybe they didn't know how. But we have to stop this. This is just bad. Our kids are falling like dominoes, and the kids are getting younger and younger, taking their lives. And what could a child that young be going through that they can't turn to their parent? These kids doing these mass shootings and then killing themselves. Fifty percent of the suicides are done with a gun or some sort of weapon. So we have got to stop this. We are only as strong as we are a community, just like we are only as strong as our public safety. And thank God for public safety in our entire state of Michigan, because they do a lot. Not only do they do their jobs, but they are counselors, mediators, interventionists. I mean, they do a whole lot. So thank you to this city for allowing our public safety to get their just due cost of living, and thank you to all of you that just are really supportive of the citizens, because we're at the top of the organizational chart. But we have got to try to do something about this. I know some people that have committed suicide, and even though they weren't my family members, you feel like, what could I have done? I know that I've had some situations where I felt like maybe this was an alternative when my brother was killed, when my 12-year-old niece was hit by a ricochet bullet, and she died for what reason? Because she was playing outside. So let's show up for this. Let's show out for our chief. This is going to be at The Hawk from 5:30 to 8:30 on Thursday, September the 14th, and I want this place to be packed. And I need all of you to bring a friend, tell a friend, but we want this place to be packed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we will move on to council members' comments and announcements. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a real quick comment. I had the opportunity to go to one of our subdivision HOA picnics yesterday. It was the Farmington Ridge Subdivision Homeowners Association. They put this wonderful party on every year, and, well, A, it was a beautiful day, but they do, they know how to put on a subdivision event, and they have 480 homes in there. They have live band, they have food, they have ice cream. It's just a really nice event, and it was very exciting to feel the energy of people coming together and enjoying their community. So kudos to them. They set a real high bar to follow. I know my subdivision's doing our subdivision annual picnic on the 7th, and I've, having gone to this a couple of times, I actually challenged my sub, hey, you know, how about some music? So we're going to have a band this year. Maybe, maybe it won't be as fancy, but it'll be fun. So I encourage, while the weather is great, this is a good time, because Michiganders, summer's too short. Get out, enjoy your neighbors, enjoy your community, enjoy the city, and, you know, we have plenty of time to pull up and read a book in front of the fireplace when it starts doing that other stuff outside. So, thank you.
Well, to Mayor, Noel?
Okay, well, I will give the community here an event that they can go to, to enjoy some music and enjoy their good conversation with their neighbors, and that is the Harvest Moon Festival. It's actually in our sister city, or, as I like to say, the downtown that we also frequent, Downtown Farmington. And it's always great when Farmington Hills residents support Farmington as well. So it's September 14, 15, and 16, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. It's right downtown at Riley Park. You can't miss it, under the pavilion there. They'll have music all three nights. They have craft beers and wines, dancing, dancing, well, of course, the music, dancing. There's going to be some food trucks and different tents with food from some of the downtown businesses in Farmington, a bonfire, and games in the, in that park area, and it's just, it's, it's a great event. It's one of my favorite. It's, I actually volunteered to pour beer there because I just, I love seeing people in the community all come and support Downtown Farmington. You run into your neighbors there, you run into friends that you haven't seen in a while, or people you went to school with. It's just, it's, it's kind of like Founder's Festival, but on a smaller scale, and it's just a really great community gathering, and it's a nice way to show support for, not just Downtown Farmington, but they really are, it's, they're our sister city. It's, we're one big community with Farmington, so that's why I want to encourage the Farmington Hills residents to go on to Downtown Farmington and for the Harvest Moon Festival. And, oh, and if you want more information, I'll just give you the website, so if you actually want to see the name of the bands, yeah, downtownfarming.org. You can find more information about the event there.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Ms. Newland?
I was going to comment on, I was at the same party that Ken was at, and I would encourage everyone that these homeowners associations, these presidents, they really put out, they really tried to put together wonderful parties. The prior weekend, I was at Rolling Oaks, and just the communities that there, the tents, I say, would always be, I encourage everyone to attend if they're subdivision picnic, if they're having any parties, to go. It's good to meet your neighbors, to talk about maybe issues, to just make community. When I was introduced to the homeowner president, he said, oh, Mary Newland. I says, yeah, I said, he said, well, which Newland are you married to? Turns out that he had known my husband and his twin brothers since they were in fourth grade. So that hopefully brought him a memory, a good thought, and, you know, it does build community to get out and talk with everyone. So I encourage you, if you belong to a group, a homeowners association, go to the party. You'll make connections.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on, it's time for the city manager update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick note, that the city open house will be held on Sunday, October 8th, from noon to 3:00 p.m. here at the city hall campus, and that is rain or shine. And just wanted to talk real quickly about the back-to-back storms that the city was struck with, or the region was struck with last week. Certainly, there were many, many power outages across the city. Some folks are still without power, perhaps even this evening, and certainly, we've been working with DTE to try to limit those as much as possible. Also wanted to talk about woody debris or tree, tree waste that was generated as part of that storm, and just remind residents that we need to adhere to the city's yard waste collection guidelines for tree branches. That includes smaller limbs, six inches in diameter or less, and brush need to be tied into bundles that do not exceed four feet in length and weigh more than 60 pounds per bundle. And that will occur, obviously, on our regularly scheduled garbage day throughout the week. And if residents need some additional information, they can find the yard waste guidelines on the city's website at FHGOV.com under our Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Public hearing number one is a public hearing in consideration of amended amendment to the Planned Unit Development Plan 5, 1993, dated May 13th, 2023, located at 36455 and 36555 Corporate Drive. This is soon to be the Comerica Buildings.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Eric Predonik, city planner, here with you tonight to introduce this item, an amendment to PUD 5, 1993, which is the NBD Bank PUD. So basically, this application would amend the PUD in order to permit new wall and monument signage, particularly at 36455 and 36555 Corporate Drive, which is the future site of the Comerica Bank. The building was formerly two buildings, as many of you probably know, but there is a connector that's essentially making the two buildings, one that's under construction currently. So to kind of summarize what the application is requesting, they're asking for four 97.2 square foot wall signs in the building. Three of those would be on the south side of the building, and one would be on the north. And then they're also asking for three freestanding signs. Two are six feet tall and 32 square feet in area, and those would be along Corporate Drive. And then there's also going to be another that would be oriented towards I-696 behind the, the building there on the south side. Because the allowance for the property in terms of signage is covered in the PUD agreement, that agreement needs to be amended, obviously, to permit signage that differs from what was originally approved there. So of course, you don't often see, you know, requests for, you know, additional signage at the council level very often. Usually, that would be something that would go before the zoning board of appeals, but in this case, the zoning board of appeals, within a PUD in particular, they don't have jurisdiction to hear appeals, and that's, that's something that, it's state law, and then, as well as in our ordinance. So back on July 20th, the planning commission, following a public hearing, recommended approval of this amendment, and the action requested tonight would be to approve the PUD plan following a public hearing. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicants to explain their proposal.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Chris Kajoyan with the Kajoyan Companies. We're the owner of the building and landlord, and original developer of the park. So we're in front of you tonight with representatives from Comerica, as well as Uco Science, who will actually be producing the signs, so we're all here to answer any questions for you. But a little bit of background, as you know, it's two separate buildings, as it stands today, or as we're connecting it. Previously, were multi-tenant properties, so Mercedes had one building, the other was a multi-tenant property. So we did actually have three signs on those buildings facing the freeway. It was Harman, Dell, and Mercedes all at one time. So since we're connecting that and making it one building, we don't meet the language in the PUD for the signage, because it's instead of two buildings, it's one. So what we're asking for tonight is to kind of clean up that language in the PUD, have Comerica's signage on that building. They're beyond excited to be in the building. We're having, you know, meetings pretty much every day, talking about getting everyone in there. So we're, you know, talking about moving 2,100 employees into this park, into the new building here. It's the Michigan Operations Center, so there's a lot of different business units moving in there, a lot of people that will be, you know, coming and going into Farmington Hills. So Comerica really wants the community to know, the state to know, people driving by on 696, that this is where they're choosing to plant their flag and have all of these people work. And it's also a huge recruiting thing for them as well, is, you know, there's a lot of people that live in this area, they want them to know exactly where Comerica's located. So the signage has become a very important issue for us. We just want to make sure that we can answer all of your questions tonight and hopefully move forward in getting them installed.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions yet? Okay, this requires a public hearing be opened, so I will now officially open the public hearing.
As a person that banks with Comerica, I am totally in favor of this. I don't know if this was an idea that was determined by Mr. Steve Davis, the president of the bank, but I'm in favor of it. And, you know, Farmington Hills is such a unique city because, like Southfield, they have a lot of trees, and sometimes these trees, although they provide oxygen and shade and all the things that we know, in a storm, they can be dangerous, but when it comes to a business, they can hinder your ability to see that business. So I think having proper signage and maybe making sure, which I think you've already done it, there's no trees where the Mercedes is, the signage is just important. So I'm in favor of amending the PUD plan number five of 1993 for my bank. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I will now officially close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Any questions?
A motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move that, resolve that the application for approval of an amendment to the PUD Plan 5, 1993, dated May 13th, 2023, is granted, and further resolve that the city attorney prepare the appropriate PUD agreement stipulating in the final PUD approval conditions and authorizing the identifying zoning deviation for city council consideration and for, and final approval.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Bridges, seconded by Ms. Noel. Any questions, discussion? I have one question. The sign that's going to be freestanding by the freeway, how, how much light is going to come off that? Is it going to affect the neighbors across the freeway?
Yeah, so the, the sign is internally illuminated, so there's not going to be spotlights from the building or anything on that sign, so it's just internally illuminated, facing the freeway, so it's not something that's going to, to shine and reach across, you know, through those trees on the other side of the freeway.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question. Any others? Seeing none, standard vote? Yes.
I just wanted to play off of your question, because we do have an ordinance on the amount of light that anything can be produced. Have you looked at that, at that particular ordinance, and know that the number of lumens produced by that are not going to be excessive? Because I think it gets right to the mayor's question.
Yeah, no, it's something we'll absolutely comply with. We do with all of our signage on our buildings. I promise, it's not going to be something that people drive by going, what is that? So it'll comply with the ordinance, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
I think that was the advantage of doing it vertically instead of horizontally, and then putting those, those little tree lines and hills lines, like our logo, was a very nice touch. Can you make them green? No, just kidding.
I would just add to that, too, that, you know, if this proposal were approved, they would have to submit for a sign permit to our office, and, you know, illumination standards and things like that. We would review all of that in detail at that time.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Okay, seeing no more questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? It passes unanimously, 6-0. Next item is a public hearing on consideration of introduction of an ordinance amending the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, zoning, Article 2, definition, in order to add a definition of shipping container and to amend the definition of building and to amend Article 5, Site Standards, Section 34-5.1, accessory building and structure, and to include a new subsection, 34-5.11H, addressing vehicles, commercial vehicles, recreational equipment, trailers, storage pods, and shipping containers and similar off-site-built enclosures that are used in an accessory building or use. Zoning text amendment 2-2023. I will point out, before we go any further, that there was an error, minor as it may be, in the publication of this for a public hearing, that we will not be closing the public hearing tonight. We will open it, and then we will probably move to defer.
We've recommended a motion to postpone any discussion or determination on the item.
Okay.
Till September 18th.
Okay, but if there's somebody here who came for the public hearing, I would like to hear them speak.
Sure.
So do you want to do a small, quick introduction?
I can do a quick introduction, just so that we all know what item we're referring to, and then we'll move right along.
Okay.
Okay. So I'd introduce myself, Charmaine Kettler-Schmaltz, the Director of Planning and Community Development. We're here tonight to have before this body the zoning text amendment 2 of 2023. The mayor introduced the item with the section of the code, but what this means as far as the draft text amendment would be related
the draft text amendment would be relating to shipping containers and their use within the city. The text amendment that we currently have drafted would prohibit the use of shipping containers and similar off-site-built enclosures with four exceptions. One would be the use of an enclosure on a permanent basis within the light industrial district with the approval of a site plan. Two, enclosures permitted on a temporary basis by the zoning board of appeals. Three, enclosures placed on residential lots for a period of time not to exceed 30 days, with an additional 30 days available where good cause is shown. And number four, enclosures placed within any zoning district in connection with an ongoing construction project during the duration of that project. Planning Commission did review and unanimously recommend adoption of this at their public hearing, which was held July 20th. Tonight, staff is recommending holding that, the public hearing for city council to afford anyone who was aware of the opportunity to come forward and make their comments, but postponing the discussion and determination of that text amendment until we're able to properly notify and publish our updated corrected public notice, and then we'll be holding the public hearing on the 18th of September.
Okay.
So, thank you. Any questions prior to the public hearing?
Mine can wait till the 18th.
Okay, is anybody from the public? I will open the public hearing. Does anybody come forward and wish to speak? Okay, be reminded that we are going to make a motion to postpone this until the 18th of September, so I will now officially suspend the public hearing for now and await a motion. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bridges.
I'd like to offer the following motion. Motion that the city council postpone discussion and action on draft zoning text amendment 2, 2023 until September 18, 2023.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Bridges, supported by Dr. Massey. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Zero. It passes 6-0. Next item is...
I'd be offered the second motion.
No, we, we need to open another public hearing.
I'm sorry. Apologize.
That's okay.
Apologize.
Next is item number five, public hearing and consideration of introduction of an ordinance amending the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, zoning, Article 2.0, Section 2.2, definitions to amend the definition of motel, zoning text amendment 3-2023.
Good evening again. Here to introduce the zoning text amendment 3 of 2023. And before we get too deep into it, the error of the previous text amendment was repeated on this item as well. So we're making the same recommendation. I'll do a brief introduction, just so that we know which text amendment draft we're referring to, but we would recommend the same motion that you gave for zoning text amendment number two be repeated for number three. For this text amendment, we're looking at the draft which addresses the definition of motel to more clearly include short-term rentals. We have had a number of issues with short-term rentals in our residential district. It is currently not a permitted use in single-family residential areas. This definition puts the city on firmer ground as far as classifying where that use is proper, properly located. Planning Commission unanimously recommended adoption of the text amendment at their public hearing, which was held July 20th. Staff is recommending holding the council public hearing this evening, but postponing the discussion and determination of that text, again, due to the error in the public notification that was published. Postponing any action on this item until September the 18th in order for the proper notification and publication of a corrected public notice.
Okay, thank you. So again, I will officially open the public hearing in case anybody came to speak on this item. You've given up your right to speak on the 18th. I'm holding you accountable. Just kidding.
I may not remember.
Come on, Madam Mayor. Go ahead.
I am so glad to see this item on the agenda because we have a lot of motels throughout the state of Michigan that at some point in time, when we had Hurricane Katrina years ago, these hotels just appeared to turn into extended stays. And they've changed the name, they've changed the decor a little bit, and it appears as if they're renting them out for apartments. So the question that I have to the council, to the mayor, and to the attorney, if a hotel go, or motel goes from renting, like for an overnight stay or weekend stay, and they have one person in this particular unit for an extended amount of time that's beyond the normal extended stay, does that classify now as a living dwelling, or is it still a motel? And then also, too, in our United States, we have a problem with human trafficking, and we need to do something else to make sure that these motels are not participating. And what I mean by participating is, if a person comes and they just want a room for an hour or two, that's got to make the red flag go up. Or if you see a person coming in to rent this place, and this person that they're with is not a woman, and it looks like a child, your flag has got to go up. So I'm glad to see this on there and look forward to making an amendment, but just maybe keeping those things in mind. And when, when should a motel come to the city for a different classification? And do they require another certificate of occupancy when they change the status?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to the city attorney for part of your question, but the, the, the theory behind this particular zoning text amendment is to end short-term rentals known as Airbnbs in our residential neighborhoods. So it's not, it's not for motels at large, but we do have some motels that may want to eventually convert to apartments, and that would mean a whole lot of construction. They would have to come for building permits, change their classification and everything else. So I'll turn it over to the attorney for a quick...
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Madam Mayor, you, you partly described exactly what I was going to say. If a motel were to convert to an apartment, for example, and start renting on a monthly basis, for example, or enter into leases payable and monthly installments and so forth, they would become a multiple-family use and be subject to the multiple-family use district requirements and fire requirements, and they would become a rental, potentially a rental facility, depending on how, what the, how it was set up. If it was a single-family home right now, it would have to be registered with the city and require, and comply with all the requirements. And in the future, it may have to be inspected if city council proceeds with other ordinances it's looking at for, for multiple-family rentals. So it would enter, as, as you said, Madam Mayor, another use category, so to speak, and have separate regulations applicable to it, possibly additional zoning regulations, and it would have to be individually inspected or investigated to see whether it's in compliance or what it might need to do to come into compliance.
Okay, thank you. And this is designed to stop somebody from renting out the house next door to you as if it's a hotel.
Yeah.
Where people move in and out, you know, every week if they go on vacation and use that as their vacation home, so...
And just, just go on YouTube and Facebook. Airbnbs in a community is not a good thing.
So it's designed to protect the public.
Yeah.
I mean, our resident, our residential neighborhoods.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Seeing nobody else, I will now officially postpone the public hearing until the 18th. Mr. Bridges?
I'd like to offer the following motion, Madam Mayor. Motion city council postpone discussion and action on draft zoning text amendment 3, 2023 until September 18, 2023.
It's been moved by Mr. Bridges, seconded by Ms. Knoll. Is there discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It passes 6-0. And that brings us to the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Dr. Massey moves adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Bridges. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
No, no, zero, 6-0. Good night, Farmington Hills. We will see you on September 11th.